Yeah, I see you in.
Okay. Just so you know, I've got to step out for a few. I'm watching my son and my wife is just pulling in, so I'll be back in a few minutes.
We're going to hold on a few minutes for Jeff anyway, thinking he's going to come.
Okay.
He'll be on.
Here's Jeff now. So Jamie, everybody's here but Donna. And Andy just has to step up for a minute with his kid, but you could probably start out by reading that little blurb you got to do at the beginning before the meeting gets started.
John?
Yeah.
Donna will be on.
Oh, she's coming in?
Blink again.
Okay. We'll give her a couple more minutes then. What RSA?
This is an executive order from the governor that they're talking about. What are they asking about RSA?
Oh, I was just looking up, getting my book ready, looking up. So we got Jeff and Ron and Steve and myself, so we can get started and hopefully Donald will join us. Right. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the September 1st meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft Team for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through Microsoft Team and public access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number, 603-664-0240, and the conference ID for the team's meeting. We will do a roll call vote for attendance. I am James Genison and I'm here. Jeff Brand?
Here.
Steve Diamond?
Here.
Donna Masucci?
Here.
There she is. Ron Allard?
Present.
And Andy, are you back yet?
I'm here.
All right. So we've got a full board tonight, and we also, in attendance, we have the Town Planner, Marshy Gases, Code Enforcement Officer John Huckins, and Land Use Administrative Assistant Barbara Irvine. We'll bump the meeting minutes approval to the end of the meeting so we can get started. And first up, I believe we have Clifford Zetterstrom from 120 Marsh Road. Would like to talk about a subdivision on a Class 6 road. Clifford, are you here? John, did you ever see him join?
Yeah, Cliff's in here. You got to hit, oh, he's on. He just hit the unmute button. He should be coming on in a minute.
Are we there?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm here with my wife Bonnie McDermott. And we purchased 42 Long Marsh Road, now 120 Marsh Road, to retire there. It's five and a half acre lot. We, our health has changed since we purchased it 22 years ago. And in doing so, we would like to, we would like to make the barn our home, and the other one would be sold off. It would be a two-acre, two-acre house, which we had planned initially to move into. Because of the stairs and because of the configuration of the house, it is not conducive to retirees at our age with some health situations. We've spoken to the road agent, the fire chief, the police chief concerning our plans. We would, they recommended and we would install a sprinkler system in the barn and put more turnouts in the road as suggested by the fire chief. The road runs along a marsh, which is, just can't get 20 feet on some places because there's a marsh on both sides. It would be cost prohibitive for us to even think about widening the road. And the road agent agreed with this assessment. What we are asking Barrington to do is to subdivide it into a three-acre and a two-acre property and be able to, the barn is about 30 years old. It's a post. So its interior is, it is structurally just perfect. But it needs some cosmetic, it needs some interior work, obviously, to move in. Won't tell you all of our plans for that building, but we just are here preliminary meeting to find out what we have to do next and if it's possible. And if you would agree to us doing this. That's the reason why we're here. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. So there's been no formal application submitted?
No, we don't. This is a preliminary. I haven't submitted anything, and it was suggested that this is how we should approach this, because if there is a, any problem whatsoever that is either financially or that we can't overcome, then we wouldn't proceed further.
Marsh, I guess I'd like to hear you weigh in first. I mean, the road is obviously the biggest issue. Not being able to bring that up to standards seems to be the largest hurdle.
Yeah. Had some conversations both with the road agent, the fire chief, and the fire chief wanted to make it clear he was only looking at, from a fire standpoint, not from a subdivision standpoint. I know that some of the department heads were under the impression, this was just for a building permit on a Class 6 road. They did not thoroughly understand that this, these folks were going to actually be asking to subdivide their property and create an additional lot on the road. I know that the police chief said that he would have an issue with the subdividing, creating additional lot, not so much with, you know, if they were building on a lot of record. I'm trying to think. I did do a recommendation. I tried to capture some of the comments that the board discussed after. I know John Huckins also weighed in. I mean, this road, this is, this is, I would say, one of, one of the poorer roads in town, poorer shaped roads. I've literally seen it underwater at times over the years. I definitely have my concerns regarding creating another lot on such a substandard road. But I'm open to conversation and comments from, from folks. But I, I didn't see support from, from members, from staff in regards to an actual subdivision.
Yeah, and Mr. Zetterstrom, I mean, personally, I guess I would feel the same way that this is certainly not the norm to increase the use. I don't know, and this, maybe speaking out there, another option might be to do an accessory dwelling unit and rent out the main house and live in an accessory dwelling unit. Just, you know, moving, thinking further down the road, because, again, it's not typical to allow subdivisions on a substandard road. If you can't bring that road up to code, and I'll let the rest of the board weigh in, please.
Well, we've had these discussions many times, and this is the first time in memory where we've actually had a road that the fire chief and, and others have determined are substandard. And we've talked about this, that, you know, what to do. Typically, we're faced with a situation where the road, although it's, doesn't, it isn't paved, it doesn't meet the requirements and the subdivision regulations. It is, you know, we're just doing, we're not doing a subdivision. We're always commenting on building permits. And this would require the board to start waiving requirements with respect to the road. And I, and I don't remember, and, you know, the assessment is, and they said they didn't disagree with the assessment from the road agent, that it is probably impossible to bring that road up to the subdivision standard. So I, I certainly don't see this as, I'm not favorable to approving a subdivision on this particular.
Perhaps this would be a good time to review exactly what the shortcomings are. I don't, I don't see that in the, the link from the agenda. Maybe others have it in front of them.
The shortcomings on the road, Steve? I think it's just, it's, it's narrow. It's below standards for subdivision and.
John, don't you have stuff onto that map and lot?
I don't think there's anything specific, is there, Barbara?
Well, there was, in the.
We don't have, I don't have a link to it because it wasn't an application. It was just a conversation coming in, so I don't have any stuff to link to. I know that.
The road agent said it was physically impossible to, you know, to make it a 20-foot road. There was issues there with wetlands. There's, there's other issues. And he didn't think that it was, it was practical or maybe even physical, physically, he quote, physically impossible to even come close to bringing a road to the town standards.
And that was the private road standards with the 16-foot travelway with the two-foot shoulders. That was that real small minimum private road standard, not the regular subdivision standard.
So.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with the, with the location. I lived pretty close to it. And there's, there's that section when you go through the marsh where it's, you know, at water level, literally, you know, and this burned up a little bit on either side. But, you know, any amount of rain does put it underwater in my experience, so it would be substantial, you know. It'd take a lot to, to fix it.
Yeah, that portion of the road, I believe, you're lucky if it's about 12 feet wide, that kind of causeway portion or whatever along the marsh. It's very, it's very narrow. And the road is actually quite long. I didn't measure it, but it's quite long to a dead end.
It's a mile.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it seems longer than that because it's slow and windy when you get towards the end. The first part's not bad, but once you get past that, like you said, that causeway, it's pretty, and I don't know how far in the houses.
It's beyond the, yeah. It's to the, it's about to the, the end of the drivable portion of the road, close to the end. It's one of the, one of the last lots out there.
So it sounds like there, there is a reason why it was named Marsh Road.
Yes.
It was Long Marsh Road at one time.
Yeah, and I, and I believe at one point it went through to, came out by.
Still does.
It does.
Oh, yeah. You see four-wheelers going through, and they go through salt, and then they'll get, you got people hiking there and bicycling. But that's past our, it's a little rougher.
Yeah.
Past our house. We maintain that road quite substantially.
Yeah, all the residents on the road, we.
Which, there were six of us.
We maintain that road.
And in doing so, it makes it passable for us. The, the whole, the whole thing that we're trying to do is, we're just adding a house that's already there. Hello?
Yes, you're going.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're adding a house that's already there to, to barn, but we're adding a house to, making the house. We have to, we have to trans, we have to put in, obviously, septic and water and all that stuff. But.
One of, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, one of the problems we have with the Class 6 roads in town, and yours is not unique to this problem, is that eventually it gets to a point where there are a lot of people living out there, and then they start complaining about access and the fire trucks getting down there on a rainy day or icy day, and all of a sudden they're stuck and someone gets hurt and ambulance can't get in, or they're trying to fight a fire out there and the trucks can't pass each other because the road's not wide enough and the house burns down, and then who's liable? So we're always up against a rock in this, and we can't say no to building permits to existing lots, per se. And we struggle with that as well, because there's this feeling of putting someone in harm's way by allowing them to live out there. But they agreed to that when they bought that lot, but adding another lot and someone purchases that lot and doesn't know what they're getting themselves into, and then comes to the town and says, why is this road so bad? Why aren't you fixing my road? It, it becomes a perpetual problem that we can never stop. And so it's, it's not common practice to, you know, add to that problem by allowing people to subdivide if they can't bring the road up to standards.
I have a question. This is Ron. I have a question too. On the drawing, it looks like the barn is, is pretty close to the road. What is this, what is the front setback on the barn?
It's about 45 feet.
You know, and I'm, and then not even to mention if, I don't know, going through the subdivision process, if you have enough contiguous uplands and you have the property to meet our standards to get two lots out of it as well. You know, where it's so marshy and wet there, I don't know. That's a whole nother, even if we were, we were to say that we would consider it, which I don't think anybody here is saying. I don't know as though that lot is subdivisible from other standards that are in our regulations, not, you know. If we could get past the road hurdle, you, you've got other hurdles that may exist beyond that.
I understand, I understand that, and what we have done is we have taken measurements. And we found out the requirements and taken measurements. There are, there are a couple of things that the engineer, when he subdivides it hypothetically, that he'll, he'll have to obviously make, make some regulatory adjustments for septic system and, and et cetera. There's three acres and there's two acres.
Yeah.
The house itself is 1866. But previously, there were two rock walls, right? Those that are walls in which I would, one is the boundary to my neighbor, and the other one separates the barn from the house. And my indication is that that one rock wall in that house was separate from the initial, from the, the rest of the property. And then somebody incorporated.
Yeah, and that may, may very well be.
No, I'm just saying, I've yet to find out who it is.
Yeah, yeah. Marsh, you were going to add something. I cut you off. I'm sorry.
Um, that's okay. Just a couple of things. I wanted to stress in the fact that this is, this is a subdivision that they're proposing. And that will basically be creating the two separate lots. Two, I wanted to point out to you in case anyone was confused. There's an error in the, in the tax map here that basically is representing Marsh Road is Class 5. I've already sent a note to have this corrected. If you can see where it goes to the solid, because I just didn't want anyone to get confused by that. The other thing, when I was having a conversation with John, we mentioned is, you know, if, if this was ever to get approved and subdivided, it doesn't go back to the Board of Selectmen for any kind of review. I mean, the buck stops with the planning board on this. So if you were to approve it, you know, John would have to issue a building permit.
Well, my question is, before a building permit, obviously, I'd have to subdivide.
Correct.
Am I getting, trying to get just to subdivide it at this point in time, or do both?
I mean, I honestly, and I'll let the rest of the board weigh in. I don't know, I don't know how we can support a subdivision for this property. I, I'm sad to say it. I just, yeah, it's, it's all about the road. I mean, you're going to have to meet construction, you know, building standards for that building, whatever that may be. But just, it's, I don't see in our regulations where we could, where this, where we could, what we could overlook or what we could give you, you know. I don't, I don't see where we could allow this. It just doesn't make a ton of sense.
Have you looked into the ADU, accessory dwelling unit option that Jamie mentioned?
Yeah.
No, we haven't, because this was our first course of action.
That, that's a state law, so it goes around local planning to some degree. And it's a more constrained, there's a limit on how many square footage, on the square footage of the, the new unit. So it's, it's treating the lot as, as your two households, but on a single lot. So it's a simpler thing with some constraints.
Okay.
Now, having done that, it's very difficult to sell one and not the other.
You cannot sell it if it's an ADU. It's all one lot. It's considered one residential dwelling.
Right.
Even if it is two separate buildings.
Right. I understand. That's the reason why I'm trying to subdivide it, trying to get two different lots out of it.
You could rent one out.
Well, we are renting the house right now. We bought that to retire in. We found that it's not conducive to our needs.
Right, so what, what we're trying to say is you could continue renting the house and live in the ADU.
Yep, I understand.
Okay.
Isn't that, isn't that funny that you say that, though? And I'm not arguing here. But you say the road isn't good enough in order for us to do this as a subdivision, but yet it's all right to do this and put another house up there with.
Only if the Selectmen authorize the building permit for the ADU after an indemnification is signed and recorded in the registry of deeds. It's not, they're saying you can do it because you still have to go through those hurdles to even do an ADU.
I understand. I understand. I'm just.
That, and that, and that was usurping the local authority by, on state level that allowed these ADUs because they saw a need for that accessory dwelling unit, so they said towns have to allow it. And that's why we mentioned it to you, because it's, 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 you know, one step, step above us.
Yeah.
They don't, okay, yeah, so it's not, it's one of those things.
I don't want to hold you up. You got a long night.
All right.
I, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Take care. Best luck. All right. Moving on to number three, we have Stephen Pamela Lindsey, Revocable Trust, request for applicant for a second, one-year extension to allow the applicant to construct the previously approved facility. Who do we have here tonight?
Hi, good evening. Dan Klasnick, I'm attorney. I represent EIP Communications.
Again.
Hi, how are you?
Very good.
As I said, I represent, if, if like I can give a, just a quick, brief overview of what we're asking for.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Provide an application, the details, narrative correspondence, incentive approved plans, copies of the prior decisions and extension, just to help the board with its review. And, and the request is for a further one-year extension to, to start work on the approved telecommunications tower that would be located at Bumford Road. As I said, just to give you a little background, it was originally approved on June 7th, 2017, with final plan approval on October 16th, 2017. By, by notice of extension dated October 9th, 2019, the board granted an extension until October 17th, 2020. Initially, I just wanted to say, as part of this request, there are no changes proposed to the approved telecommunications facility. Just by a reminder as to what was in fact approved. It would be the installation of a 150-foot monopole tower designed to accommodate four wireless service providers. There would be a fenced-in area of about 3,055 square feet. Access was via an existing driveway off of Bumford Road. There would be an extension of that as it all had been approved, along with electric and telephone service. So that's an outline of what this board has already approved through the site planning review process. So even though the decision specifies a single one-year extension, what we're respectfully requesting is a waiver of that to grant an additional one-year extension. And as we've outlined in our correspondence, really, the failure to grant that would, would result in a substantial hardship to EIP in that it's taking or creating uncertainty at the very time where they are working to confirm the project's status with their customers. Because there are no changes to the approved facility, we believe that a one-year extension would be consistent with the spirit and intent of, of the planning board regulations. I did want to emphasize that EIP continues to diligently pursue completion of the project, that there are circumstances that are beyond its control related to consolidation in the wireless industry. Sure, we're all comfortable now with that there, we're living in a lot of uncertainty. So that's what's resulted in the delay to the construction. And my client believes that, you know, granting a further one-year extension, it will be able to complete the coordination with its customer to allow the installation of the tower ultimately as approved, which I'm sure as this board's aware would provide improved wireless service to the town of Barrington, not only its residents, its businesses, but also its emergency responders. So we specifically and respectfully request a further one-year extension until October 21st, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Does the board have any questions in, in respect to the application at this point, so we can accept that application as complete?
I have none.
All right. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the application as complete. We, we staff indicate that we have all the information that we need to accept that application as complete.
I make a motion that we accept application 251-64-DR-SDAO-17 as complete.
Celine is now joining.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Roll call vote, Ron Allard?
This is on accepting as complete, correct?
Just accepting the application as complete, correct?
Aye.
Hi, this is Celine Trail calling from Province Road in Barrington. And I don't know what took so long. I was trying to get into your meeting and the telephone number that you have to call and the conference ID just took a little bit longer than expected.
Celine, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're in the middle of voting on something. Can I just ask you to hold, hold for one second and we'll open up public comment shortly?
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Andy, Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Donna Masucci?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Aye.
Jeff Brand?
Aye.
James Genison, aye. The application is accepted as complete. Does the board have any questions about the extension request?
Well, in order to. In order to do this, we're going to have to waive a requirement, correct?
It would appear so.
Because I didn't see a waiver request. I thought the package was well put together with an explanation. Marcia, what, what do we have to approve for a waiver in order to approve the extension?
So typically, in every other case, it wasn't so much as asking for a waiver as, as granting and, you know, asking to grant another extension on the approved project. I suppose you can look at it any way you want.
Well, but, but they're, they're asking for an extension. We have a requirement. Shouldn't we have to do, and we can do this ourselves, but shouldn't we have to waive the requirement so that we can provide the extension?
If you would like to do it that way, sure. Technically, I guess you, you're correct in that sense. You could do it that way.
All right. I will, I will indicate that we have several letters from local citizens, as well as the Butters, that want to express again their great concern regarding the tower, 5G technology and the EMF that are radiated. And so I will mention that. Those will be read into the record and, and, and part of, part of this meeting. Does the board have?
Before, I mean, if the board has further questions, I just. Before, I mean, if the board has further questions, I just, as part of this, I think too, before um we open public comment, there's um section of the state regulations in regard, and I think a lot of the people have questions that the state law actually will address. So it's when the board finishes making whatever comments they would or questions they have, um I if you would allow me to just um read from the the state RSA, some of the the regulations um or limitations that the state puts upon the municipalities.
That'd be great. Does the board have any questions or comments before we have Marsha read from the RSA?
I do. So um as I understand it, we are allowed to grant one extension and we're not supposed to grant anymore, but we have the power to waive the rule. Is that what that was happening basically?
Yes, because there are rules, we are able to waive them.
Well, by state law, we can waive any regulation that we have approved. So that's why I was bringing up the point of I think we have to process a waiver before we can grant the extension. So I think the answer to your question, Steve, is.
Okay.
The one year rule is ours. Sorry, sorry, Marsha. But the one year rule is ours. That's why we can grant that. Go ahead, Marsha.
Yeah, the and in regards to the same type of information, because I know I've been through this with also with the ZBA um and with the town's attorney. One of the things you look at and and I looked at and I asked the the um town's attorney to look at. Have there been any changes in state law or in our regulations which would make it um impossible for us to actually grant the extension? There have been no changes within our regulations or state law that would validate us um not approving an extension of this of this approval.
Yeah, my question in that in that regards is is well, one, what's the relevant, you know, what's the point of having the rule if, you know, and what happens in the following year may be more important than what's happened in the past year. In the next year to come, if rules change, uh that would be, I think, be more indicative um if they had to come back through the process, and that's that's my only hang up with some of this technology stuff. Um not being an expert in it, that's that's kind of one of my concerns, but.
But if we grant the extension, then they if the rules change between now and next year, then uh uh at least if any of our rules changed, they would need to come back to us because just like all projects, once we approve it, it's good, you know, until the the end of the approved period.
It would, in this sense, it would be good for the for the year. I mean, if if something changed and they tried to come back again, then that then there you have the reason to go through the whole process again.
But they're not actually changing it. They're not asking. So it yes, if they, you know, with all projects, if they decide to change the the project in some 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 substantial way in which then, you know, that they now, you know, maybe they're gonna build a bigger tower, or maybe they're gonna build two buildings instead of one, then they need to come back. But if they're doing nothing different, they don't, they wouldn't need to come back.
If the law changes, okay, if the law changes and they don't do what they need to do in the next year, then they'd have they then you could deny another ex another extension of the approval and they would have to come back.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Uh, does the rest of the board have any comments? Marsha, if you want to take the time to read from the RSA, is your reference just before we open public comment?
Sure. This is, if anyone is is interested, this is RSA K 12K 11. It says limitations on applications. In order to ensure uniformity across New Hampshire with respect to the consideration of every colo col col, hold on to this, collect of colocation application and modification application, no authority may require an applicant to submit information about or evaluate an applicant's business decisions with respect to its its design service, customer demand for service or the the quality of the service or from a particular area or site. I think this is actually colocation. Evaluation, a colocation applicant or modification applicant based on the availability other than potential locations for replacement of towers, mounts, PWSS. Decide which type of personal wireless services, infrastructure or technology shall be used by the applicant. Require the removal of existing mounts, towers, or PFS F S wherever located as a condition of approval of the colocation application or modification. Um, impose environmental testing, sampling or or monitoring requirements or other compliance measures for radio frequency emissions or PWSS that are categorically excluded under the FCC's rules for radio frequency emissions pursuant to 47 CFR section 11307. Establish or enforce regulations or procedures for radio frequency signal strength or adequacy of service quality. Now, colocations is when you you know, the attorney, when you actually use um put two items on the same, but and and also relevant to it, a lot of these same rules apply no matter what. So that I just wanted to stress that a lot of the rules go beyond what the planning board um is allowed to do, that a lot of these laws are from state law. And that their idea is not to inhibit the um expansion of cell towers and communication within the state of New Hampshire. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, and and to further that, I'll I'll read from 12K3 that says each carrier or its appointed agent doing business or seeking to do business in this state shall be allowed to construct new towers, provided that these towers comply with municipal regulations maximum height, maximum allowed height above the average tree canopy height, et cetera, et cetera. So there there there's state, you know, limitations on what we can do. Um if if our zoning allows uh towers, then we have to allow towers if they meet these requirements. So um based on that, well, you know, hopefully that information helps people that have questions, and uh if the board doesn't have any questions, I'll open up public comment.
Well, I'll just say, so the bottom line is what what we're doing is ensuring that construction of the facility uh complies with our our regulations. However, we have no say over the technology that's used on the tower. That's the purview of the federal government.
That's how I understand it. So if there's no other questions on the board, we'll open up public comment at this time. Uh if you are on your phone, um star six will unmute you if typing um on chat, I will try to recognize that as well. But if anybody uh would like to comment, now's appropriate time.
Yep, Helene Trail from Province Road. Um, we've gone through this last year and um we ended up going to another meeting to try to look into why we were not included um in the initial proposition of this tower being built. I have a question. Uh, how loud is my volume on your end?
Oh, I've got you loud and clear. Um, Helene, um.
I don't want to be too loud. That's what I'm asking.
No, you're fine. Thank you. Uh, and and so the question is, why weren't you notified as?
So, no, no, no. So we've already gone through this. So this is part of the issue. We were, we were not included, as were many of our neighbors. And what happened is we believe that it was part of the um typical rules that apply to building a home, whereas technology is not a just because you live next door type of situation. It's a special circumstance where people in the neighborhood should have been included. So um we're in contact with Senator Waters and many other people on uh various committees who are trying to work with these telecommunications companies in regard to what you expressed earlier regarding the 5G um repercussions. So the reason for me speaking up this evening is to ask two questions.
Okay.
Why would you extend this application another year?
Um, I'll answer that one first because state law mandates that we allow these to go forward if they meet our zoning regulations, which this one does, where we've had no substantial change, if any change in that zoning. So it would not typically make sense to um deny the extension and have them reapply. So it's, I I guess it's a judgment call and it's.
Here we are. You just said that there there's gonna be another um meeting again next year because they're asking for another extension if they don't build this tower, correct?
Well, wow, I can't, we can't see the future, so I don't know. If they don't start within this next calendar year, well, they'll come for another extension or not. We'd have to cross that bridge when we get there, but um currently we're just faced with a one-year extension from today.
Well, I'll also say.
If they don't build the tower, they will have to apply for another extension, correct?
Correct.
Because I heard you say that earlier. I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, this is a, this is a one-year extension.
Right. So the other question that I had was um I have been told, and this is hearsay, but I have been told by a neighbor who is actually on one of or involved with one of the other committees in town. There was um some mention that this tower might have to be moved by 40 yards because of wetlands issues. Have you heard anything about that?
No.
There's no basis to that statement for anything for regulations in this town.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because we're being told by one of the butters that it may need to be moved.
Uh, yeah, and I'm not sure if he's um I'm reading from a a letter um from another citizen that that believes the 5G emissions would affect wildlife. Um, and I don't know, and he lives um close to the property or a butter and believes it'll affect the wildlife in the wetlands. So I don't know if that's kind of where that that came from, and I'm not um but it but it it wouldn't violate, at this point, violate any of our regulations by being next to the wetlands as um Mr. Hawkins mentioned.
Tower itself is not, it's not questionable about where the tower is being erected.
I have not heard any questions raised about that. John.
We have a signed signed site plan for that application. It was approved and it has to be be built as it was approved, or it will have to come back for some kind of amendment. But.
As Marsha stated earlier, the rules haven't changed.
I believe that would open up the door for um the 21 other people in our neighborhood that want to express their feelings about this being built.
I, uh, you know, Helene, I mean, the 21 people are more than welcome to express their feelings currently, but it the 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 problem we run into um over and over again is with state law is that regardless if 100 people show up and express their feelings, it doesn't change that the state mandates that we allow it if it meets our zoning regulation. Now, there's a path to change our zoning regulation, but if it then conflicts with state law, we'd still have to allow it. It's uh you, I I think you came in afterwards, we were talking about accessory dwelling units. That's a state law that says we have to allow accessory dwelling units. We can manipulate what we allow, but state says we have to allow it. So if the state says we have to allow cell towers, so communications can expand in this country, then we can't say no to it. We can put some regulations on it um to meet um, you know, s town-specific criteria, but we can't um, we can't just decide that we're not gonna do cell towers in Barrington. Um, I don't think that would be uh allowed from a state level, and it would open us up to um, you know, litigation if if we try to uh blanket say no cell towers in Barrington. Does that make sense?
Oh, it does make sense, and I understand you have to work within the guidelines of the law. So I guess what our question is, is what would cause this board to reconsider approving a cell tower that's being put up in a very sickly settled residential neighborhood with two schools that are in less than a mile and numerous businesses? So what would, what would stop this board from approving that extension?
We already have approved it and and the matter of the matter of the wetlands and proximity of of people was something that was considered and discussed at the time. I believe what's in front of us right now is the question of waiving our site plan review regulations is really the the main crux of our of our deliberations, I think, today.
So there's nothing that we can say to stop this from happening, is what you're saying?
I'm saying that uh within the constraints that we're operating in, I think you might be most, it might be most useful for you to uh focus on uh uh the the rules we have in front of us, specifically site plan review to. No, no, uh what our Barrington rules, our internal rules, that that the board has the ability, the authority to waive, but what our rules say, our site plan review regulations 2.5.12 is that we are, we are allowed to grant an extension for one year, which we did. Majority vote of the board can do that, but uh the board may grant only one such extension for a proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances and regulations. So the question before us for the board right now is should we waive this rule?
So my question to you is, it's already been extended by one year. I was there last year when it got extended for a year. And I was hoping, but unfortunately I was deterred from being able to get in because it was an issue with the phone call thing. But I was hoping to get in and talk to you before you actually voted on approving the another yearly waiver.
Oh, we haven't voted yet.
The and the focus, the focus of the board is um and and I and I believe Steve said this, whether anything in the regulations has changed or not, and that would actually trigger because that's what the regulations say. Has there been any changes in the regulations that would um trigger a whole review, re-review of this application? And if there's not been any changes in the regulation, why would you need to re-review it? That I think that's, we gotta stick with the focus of what the question is.
I think you're absolutely right. I don't think there is, you've confirmed there's no change, but my biggest question to you is you don't have to approve this extension today. You you have the option of rejecting this extension because by law, they were allowed to get a yearly extension, and I did hear James say that. And the thing is that you could, in your power as a board today, deny that extension, right, Steve? I see you shaking your head.
Absolutely. We we, following our site plan review regulations, we could simply follow it as it's written and decline to waive our own rules.
Okay, I'd like to explain something here.
As one of the residents in this neighborhood that are speaking for so many other people that are just hoping that this thing falls through the cracks, we're hoping that you will decline that extension today.
Could I, could I explain something here, Jamie? You let me explain something?
Yes, yes, John, please, go ahead.
So really, what this comes down to is if they deny the extension, they would make an application for the same exact thing. We already have the same exact rules through the state and through the town's regulations. So the results would be the same. So why would you say that they have to go through a whole new application and spend all the money and do all of that when the results are gonna be the same? It's gonna come out to the same thing other than the fact that you're just trying to hurt them because it's not gonna change the outcome. That that's the point we're at.
Well, the outcome could change.
We want to keep ourselves from being hurt because we know that 5G technology is gonna end up getting used. And we see the results of what that technology is doing, and if you don't believe that, look around the country.
The state will not allow, state law does not allow the planning board to address 5G technology.
Technology.
The state does, the state has said the town has no regulatory say on that technology. The town can only apply its own regulations. The state is very clear, whether it's by. The town can only apply its own regulations. The state is very clear whether it's 5G, 6G, if there was a 20G and it caused all this stuff, if the state through the FCC allows it, the planning board has no say. It's all regulated by the state. So you're asking the towns, this planning board to regulate something they have no authority to regulate. That's what the issue is. If you had something that you could point to, that this board has a right to regulate that wasn't done correctly, then speak up and say that. But to keep going on, on things that they have no authority over serves no purpose.
I understand what you're saying, but for them to have to put an application in, again, would offer the people in this neighborhood and the surrounding community to come in and express.
I guess, I guess, Helene, you're missing John's point.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right. You're, well, I do, but the point is that you have the opportunity right now. And again, I take, I would take input from 100 residents right now. We'd listen to you all night long. But at the end of the day, if we don't do this extension, we've, we've spoke for three hours, whatever it may be, the application is still approvable. Um, by our regulations, by state mandate, this application is approvable. So we're faced with the idea, do we waste their time and money? Or do we just give them an extension for something that's an approvable app, application? I'm not, we don't always like every application that comes in front of us. And everybody has their own opinions, but it doesn't mean that we can deny them based on our opinions and our feelings. We have to look at the zoning we have and this meets our zoning requirements. It meets state regulations. And so for, we, we don't have a basis to deny. And saying that you weren't heard is not a basis for denial. The opportunity to be heard is now. This meeting is open and we'll keep it open as long as we need to, if there's more people that want to be heard. But it doesn't change the fact that this is an approvable project. And so that's what we have to look at as a planning board. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. And just to, again, clarify, what you're saying is even if they did another application, that it wouldn't matter how many people showed up to that meeting, correct, John?
Correct. Yeah. Opinion, opinion.
Showed up.
It's not a popularity contest. It's based on, do they meet the rules or regulations?
Well, wait a minute. Okay. I said another way that maybe is clearer is that the arguments being made with respect to the hazards of the technology is not a grounds that the planning board of Barrington can consider for disapproval. That we are prohibited under federal and state law from considering that when we're determining whether to approve the project or not. Even, let's just say for argument's sake, all of your arguments with respect to the health and safety associated with 5G is legitimate. We still do not have the authority, the power under law to use that as a grounds for disapproval. We just don't.
That's my understanding as well.
Pardon me?
That bother you guys?
It doesn't really matter if it bothers you, it's just the reality.
Yeah. It's a lot of questions to be asked here. So Helene, I don't want to take away your voice, but if you have another question, we'd be happy to answer that one. But I think we've covered this subject well.
No, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't have any further questions. I guess I'm a little disappointed in the fact that, you know, people come to their government and they can't get any, there's just no result. I mean, you're, you just basically told me it doesn't matter what could happen. Your, your kids can all get cancer or they can all, you know, break out of their bodies.
But this is.
I think our point is you're coming to the wrong government. Right.
Work with David Waters, get things changed on that rule. Talk to your federal senators and representatives.
Oh, we are, John.
If they, if they change the rules, then the planning board could have their decision based on that. But at this point in time, the planning board can't go against the, the state's authority. New Hampshire's not a home rule state. They only have the authority specifically given to it by the state. And the federal government gives the state specific authority and the federal government and the state says the planning board cannot consider this. Now, if you can get them to change their rules, then the planning board could consider it. But you have to get them to change their rules because the planning board's hands are tied in this right now.
Yep. I hear you. I hear what you're saying.
All right. Thank you so much for your time.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time, Helene. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too.
Is there anyone else that would like to add comment at this time?
Helene.
Is now exiting.
Sorry to hear anybody else. We'll close public comment if there's anybody that comes, um. All right. Uh, board, have any more questions?
I don't have any. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Um, this is a, a technology issue and three years have gone by. Uh, and, uh, so, so things could have changed. I recognize that, that we are not aware of any regulatory changes that are specifically relevant to this. However, there, there could be things that, that have changed. Uh, and I do not agree with the interpretation that we are required to pass this in violation of our site plan review regulations.
We're not required to pass it? No.
I agree with you as well, Steve. It's, in the face of not passing it, what's the option? To have them come before the board and resubmit?
Well, and, and so they're, they're asking for an extension for an approved project in which we set out the conditions of approval. Uh, none of our regulations have changed during that period of time with respect to building this tower. So, uh, you know, if there was some change in regulations at the federal level that required them to make changes, um, in, in the project, you know, whether it's the design of the tower or the buildings or whatever, they'd have to come back to us. So, uh, e- even with respect to Steve's concern about, uh, wonder if there's some regulation that changed that we don't know about. Well, if it actually required a change in the site plan as a result of that, then they'd have to come back to us anyway.
Right. And we should, we should have been aware of it.
So, so there's the, you know, by not, by not granting them the extension, yeah, they could resubmit. But I would agree with John's assessment that if they changed nothing, they simply took the same application, uh, did whiteout, and I'm showing my age now, did whiteout on the application and resubmitted it. Then, uh, you know, that they meet all the conditions for approval. And so, uh, it, it makes no sense.
Right. And whereas nothing has changed, we'd have no ground for disapproval on the next go around.
Right.
Some things have changed. There, there are different people on the board.
This, to me, you know, there, the statements that were extenuating circumstances, consolidation in the industry, COVID, things like that. That to me was a valid argument. And so that resonates with me as well.
Right. I was also, I was also going to add in the comment that we're, we're looking at this from the standpoint that are we, um, are we going to, are we creating an unnecessary hardship? And I believe by denying it to make them reapply, come back through, it prove based on the fact that nothing's changed, we would be creating an unnecessary hardship for the applicant.
Yeah. Steve, you had something else you wanted to say?
I'm trying to remember what it was. Um. Oh, oh, yes, that, uh, something has changed. The composition of the board has changed over that time, for instance.
True. And, and so we're not, yeah, I'll just, I'll just say that, yes, it has. And so, so we have a motion will be proposed, uh, may or may not be seconded, and then the board will vote. So that will give the newer, the newer board members an opportunity to weigh into whether they think this is appropriate or not.
So I think we're at the point to entertain a motion.
Oh, I have one other thing to add.
Go ahead.
Uh, the attorney didn't, uh, he meant, he made mention of COVID, but he didn't really say what the hangup was and didn't give me any reassurance that in a year, things will be different. So, uh, I would like to hear at least some sort of reason that, to illustrate that this isn't just kicking the can down another year and then they're going to ask for it again and again and again. I mean, surely we have a limit at some point. Our rules say, say what they say. Uh, and we're, we're talking about stretching it. How far have we got to stretch it and why?
Daniel?
Yes, if I may, um, my reference to COVID was not to imply necessarily that that was one of the cause and effects. And the primary cause and effect was related to the consolidation that occurred recently in the industry. My client is a tower developer. They work with their customers. Their customers are the wireless service providers. Part of this consolidation in the industry, as you can, I'm sure appreciate, these were two, these are very large companies. There's a requirement to evaluate not only all the existing assets, but also future network design bill plan. So the initial request was based upon the fact that the merger had not yet occurred. This one, although it has occurred, there is a continuation of my client's efforts to work with their customers to get an understanding of their design. So there's, that's the uncertainty, uh, that I was speaking about, that they're continuing to evaluate. And the expectation is, and I certainly can't guarantee what will occur, any more than anybody else can on the board in the future. But what I can say is that my client has been working diligently. They're, of course, incredibly motivated as they've invested a lot of already time and money into this project to make it work for the wireless service providers to provide, as I said, the improved service. So the hardship really does result from the fact that we've already gone through this process and that by creating a situation where the permits are now somewhat uncertain, um, it would make it even more difficult for my client to complete its conversation and its review with the wireless service providers. Right now they're presenting to them a, shall I say, a shovel-ready project. And, uh, so that gives them the ability to present that. So the measure of uncertainty, once again, that would be introduced would be a detriment to the ability to continue to finalize, uh, their conversation.
You, the reference to COVID, is that because with this merger and now trying to develop the, the plans coming out of the merger that COVID may have slowed down those communications and negotiations?
I can't, I can't speak specifically to that, but I think we've all encountered some of the difficulty. I mean, it's great that we have this technology available. I'm able to come before and appear before the board. But I think we can all realize and appreciate through our limitations, um, priorities shifted. Uh, but I can't specifically say that it was COVID-related. It's, it's more in related to the fact that they're continuing to evaluate priority. The expectation is that given this one-year extension, they'll be able to resolve those. The period of time they'll have decided, my client will be in a position to finalize this partnership with the wireless service provider.
Satisfied? Satisfied, Steve?
Uh, well, I, what I heard was that it's not related to the COVID crisis. So, yeah, basically the industry has difficulties and, uh, it sounds like they're asking for special treatment more than, uh, um, something routine.
Yeah. I think, wha- what I heard was Sprint had a merger and, you know, during, you know, they're, they're trying to figure it out if this tower is worth building. And I mean, it may come back next year that they choose not to do it. I don't know, you know? So I guess that's not a bad thing, but we're faced with kicking the can down the road and give them another year or, or, uh, ask them to resubmit.
Indeed. That is the choice. But I wanted to point out, um, from what Marsha was reading earlier from state law, I guess, we are, in addition to not being allowed to consider any of the health effects from the, the radiation of the, of the microwaves, we're also not allowed to consider, uh, how much we might need, uh, you know, any flaws in service or how much we might need, uh, another cell tower. Uh, so, so some of the arguments that the attorney made, we are not allowed to consider.
Right. I mean, and not even to mention, I mean, one, one of the statements is we must approve any changes to an eligible facility that does not substantially change the physical dimension. I mean, so, you know, the, the, the state has given very broad, um, allowances to, to approve these because communication must go on.
And Steve, this is Ron. I mean, working in private industry for a long time, I can tell you, they generally don't build, spend money and build things that have no value. So if they're, if they're willing to build another cell tower, they think is the reason for it. I mean, that's just, that's just my opinion. And I know the argument was made, it's going to be close to stuff, but that's kind of the point of cell towers, you know? You can pet a service when they're close.
I mean, I know I have horrible service in Barrington. And, and so, I mean, the benefit on that, but I'm sure there's.
We're not allowed to consider that. That's the problem.
Right. And I'm sure there's numerous negative benefits to it that, um, you know, I, I, big brother's going to be watching me too. I'm sure he's going to have something on that poll that I don't want up there, but I can't consider that either, you know? RFID readers, who knows what's going to be up there. But, um, again, beyond my scope on this board. Um, so.
But I think that the applicant has simply given us a reason why, which is that, you know, the applicant's going to build the tower. They're waiting on the customer to go ahead, uh, make the approval and, and write the check. So they're totally dependent on what the customer's doing. And to this point, the customer has been slow in, in greenlighting the project.
So based on that, I will make a motion to grant a one-year expense, extension, uh, to September 1st, 2021.
Don't we first have to waive the requirement?
I don't believe so, but if, if that's how you prefer to do it, um, I need the regulation so I can do that.
Well, that's 2.5.12 under the site plan review. But I don't know how we can approve an extension when our rules specifically prohibit that unless we decide to waive the requirement.
I, no.
You could incorporate it into your motion for the, um, extension, incorporate that, um, language, incorporate that you're waiving that section of the ordinance.
What was it again? 2.1? So I can cite the right one?
2.5.12.
Can I make him?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just so I understand, the, the request was to extend to October 17th, 2021? I think I, I just heard September.
Yeah, we were giving one year.
It would be from the date they were last approved, the last extension.
It really is extended until October 17th, 2020.
Okay. So it would have to be October 17th, 2022.
21.
21.
But I see here, it says, extension was granted October 1, 2019. That's the date it was granted on, but the date was different.
They granted a one-year extension from the original approval. Now he's asking for a one-year extension from that one-year extension.
And then that was the 17th?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion to grant a waiver from 2.1.
2.5.
I'm sorry, 2.512?
Yes, 0.12.
To grant an additional one-year extension to October 17th, 2021.
As?
Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship. And I don't, I don't have the rest of the language.
Granting the waiver would be consistent with the regulations.
Thank you.
Assisting with the spirit of the, the spirit of the intent of the regulations.
Right.
Thank you for all the help. That, that, that's the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by James Jensen, seconded by Andy Knapp. Uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Uh, Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Did we lose her? We haven't heard from her.
Yeah, I'm just, really.
I'm sorry. It's not my internet's going out, man. Whoa, I heard that. Aye.
Uh, Steve Diamond.
Diamond's name.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Jensen, aye. Uh, 5 to 1. The extension is granted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Have a great night.
Great evening. Take care. Thank you so much, Mark.
All right. All right. Moving on to the next one, we have, uh, Franklin Resources Group, Nipple, Nipple Lake Golf Course, request by applicant to amend their site review for a first floor pro shop addition and second story deck addition with waivers. Do we have someone here for that?
Uh, this is John Marino.
Hi, John. How you doing? Hi, John. How you doing?
Good.
What do we have?
And also Chris Hickey is here from Eric Mitchell and Associates.
Welcome, Chris. Want to give us a brief description?
You want to go, Johnny? Or me to?
Oh, you may as well go ahead. I mean,
Okay. Yeah. Uh, so we're here for a proposed singles, first-floor addition to the Nipple Lake Pro Shop. Um, looking to extend the pro shop out about six feet on the golf course side um, to wrap around, to give a little bit more room for the pro shop. Um, and then at the same time, extend the second-story deck out two more feet and then wrap that where the pro shop, the doghouse used to be, um, to make a 56-foot deck. Um, on the, on the plans that we had submitted, there's a, there's a blow up in color, which hopefully everybody has that and can see that, uh, because it makes everything fairly self-explanatory, I believe. Um, all the ground that is underneath, um, where the proposed improvements would be is all pavement. And, um, so there's no, there's not going to be any increase to any impervious area, so should not affect the drainage at all. Um, yeah, there's the color copy right there. Thank you. Um, so, uh, that's basically it. It's pretty simple. We are, uh, asking for a few waivers to the site plan regulations. Um, if you want, I can go through those one by one or just read them all off to you, however you would like me to do that.
One at a time, I think.
Okay. Uh, so the first one that we are, uh, requesting is to, uh, boundaries, item 18, section 3.31, uh, to not show the entire boundary of the parcel. Um, it was previously surveyed and the plan is recorded in the registry. Um, but for the, you know, for the scope that we're doing here to, uh, have to show the entire boundary, um, does not seem necessary. Um, so, uh, so that's the first one.
Is that, when you say the entire property, that encompasses the golf course?
Yeah, on the, uh, what's that, the north side of Stagecoach, it's a 66-acre parcel. Uh, we do show it on the plan. Um, and, uh, we just don't show all the math on it and the full boundary on it. But we do show a tax map sketch, um, a 400 scale, I believe. Um, it's up in the top left corner.
Yeah, so, I'm just asking because I, I've just looked, I've looked at the plans here that you gave. I see up in the left-hand corner of the plot plan, the area of the detail. And so, I mean, that's why I'm asking, i- is just because you're talking about a huge lot here. You're talking about a very small area of improvement.
Correct, correct, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Then, uh, the next waiver we're looking for is to not require to show the contiguous upland calc on the property. Um, these next three or four are kind of all go together, um, again, because we're, we're, um, you know, just impacting a very small portion of the property, um, not to have to do, you know, the wetland mapping and the delineation and all that stuff. So without doing those things, then it's somewhat impossible to do a contiguous upland calc unless you were to do the wetland mapping on the whole piece. Um, and again, it's a 66-acre parcel and we're only impacting, you know, 1,000 square feet of, uh, right around the pro shop. So, um, to have to do all that extra work, um, you know, would be, um, you know, wouldn't be really fair to the client to spend all his money to do that kind of stuff. So we, we feel that's a good hardship for him there. Um, and that basically covers the contiguous uplands, uh, which is section 3.39. Uh, the limit of wetland, uh, over the entire parcel, section 3.313. Uh, and with that goes the wetland delineation criteria and then also the certification from wetland scientists. So tho- those are those parcels that, um, parcels, those waivers. And then, uh, the last one is not to require showing the full two-foot contour intervals over the whole 66 acres. You know, we've shown the topo right around the area, um, of the, uh, of the building and the parking lot and whatnot. So, uh, that would be another, um, reasonable request waiver, we feel.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, does the board have any questions in regards to, is this, are we looking at a new application for this or just amending? We have to accept that application as complete, Marcia?
Yes, I mean, it is, it's a small, it's an amendment, but you still have to accept it as complete and have a public hearing and, and everything.
All right, I just didn't see it in my packet. So, uh, does the board have any questions in regards to the application specific, please?
It's number four in your packet.
Yeah, I just, I didn't get the, I didn't get a plan. I'm looking at, I've got the big one, but, um,
There was an application. I have the application.
Okay.
So if no one has any specific questions, then I make a motion to accept application 227-20-GR-20-SR as complete.
Second, uh, motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Ron Allard, uh, James Jenison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Application is accepted as complete. Um,
I, I just got one question is that, uh, the land use documents reference that, uh, this is a minor site plan, uh, that's being amended and attached to a previously approved site plan in 2010 for the Nipple Lake Golf Course. So I assume that when the previous site plan was approved, that these items as far as boundaries, contiguous uplands, all of that was addressed in the previous approval?
I didn't actually bring the, I was looking just at what we have right here. I don't know. That's been a while. Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I believe Marcia used, you had sent me all the prior files.
Yeah.
So I believe I pretty much just copycat at everything that they had asked for in the past.
And it really, the only, I, I, you know, we, changes we've had to our regulations would be wetlands from 2010, correct?
We hadn't changed wetlands since 2010.
Have not. All right. Um,
And, and remind you, this, this is a deck over paved area, so there's really no change in impervious surface.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, before we, uh, go through the waivers, we'll open public comment and see if we have any questions or comments from the public. If there's anyone out there that would like to ask questions, make comments. Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Um, we'll run down these waivers. Um, trying to keep my file neat. Uh, boundaries. Waiver 3.3.1 boundaries. I will make a motion to waive 3.3.1 boundaries to not, to not require showing the full boundary of the lot. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Aye, second.
Motion by James Jenison, seconded by Jeff Brand, uh, Ron Allard.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. Waiver 3.3.1 granted. Uh, 3.39 contiguous uplands to require the contiguous upland area as this lot is 66 acres. I'll make the motion to grant the waiver for 3.3, parents nine, contiguous uplands. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Aye, second.
Motion by James Jenison, seconded by Jeff Brand, uh, Ron Allard.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. 3.3, parents nine, contiguous uplands waiver granted. Uh, 3.3, parents 13, limits of wetlands to not require wetland mapping as the lot is 66 acres. I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for 3.3, parents 13. As not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Aye, second.
Uh, motion by James Jenison, seconded by Jeff Brand, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. 3.3, parents 13, waiver granted. Uh, I don't know if that's a duplicate. Wetland delineation falls into that same. Do I need to grant that one twice, Marcia?
Um, I just, yeah, do it. I, I, it was
All right.
They listed it separately. It's both under 3.13.
All right, I'll make a motion to, uh, waive 3.3, third, parent 13, wetland delineation criteria. And is not granting, uh, the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second. Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, 3.3, parents 13, wetland delineation, parents granted.
I make a motion to waive 3.3, parent 13, wetland scientist certification. As not granting waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Second.
We got a motion by Jeff Brand and seconded by Donna Masucci. Did I hear that right?
Yes.
All right, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Jenison, aye. 3.3, parents 13, wetland scientist certification waived.
I make a motion to waive 3.3, parent 3, two-foot topography for the entire parcel. And is not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
I second that.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Donna Masucci, uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. 3.3, parents 13, two-foot topography, uh, waiver granted. All right, now that we made it through the waivers, does the board have any other questions, comments?
Yes, um, so them asking for, and presuming we, uh, approve this application, does that reset any grandfathering of any kind regarding, uh, our rules? Does that make sense?
Uh, I, I, I think I get the gist of the question. Um, you know, typically, I think, like with the subdivision, where they meet new requirements, right?
Um, this changes nothing. This is still exactly the same rules they had before this application.
So if it was a, a new subdivision, that's when it would
Subdivision, the date of the subdivision affects, um, like, um, whether it's a wetland buffer or a setback, um, or that kind of stuff. The asset time of subdivision, a site review has no timing on that.
Or change of use would have impact, but if they were changing the use, right?
If they change the use, it still doesn't change the zoning requirements. It's just approving a use for an existing lot.
Unless that use was in conflict with the new rules, correct?
The new use, wow, the existing use, as long as it was continued, is considered vested so they can continue with that use. Um, but the new use they're asking for would have to be in compliance with current, um, regulations.
Right, so, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah. I, i- if it was a change in use they were here for, I was just expanding on Steve's comment, but
Understood.
All right, any other questions? There's one, uh, Mr. Hickey, there was one question from the planner as far as, uh, existing lighting. Um, covering the additional deck area and, uh, light, like exterior lighting on the pro shop to meet regulations.
Okay. Um, yeah, I believe, um, you know, there are some exterior lights out there. And, um, John could speak better for this, um, you know, when he goes through and gets his, whatever, um, you know, working with John. But certainly he'll put up any lighting, you know, that, that's required to, uh, to meet code. And, um, you know, obviously he's going to want to, the, the pro shop, you know, it's going to be underneath the deck, so there'll be, and I think there are lights on the existing building now, like right on the corner, so those will be moved, uh, you know, to appropriate locations. Um, so, but we can certainly add or subtract lighting if, if the board
Yeah, Marcia, should we, uh, add a note to that effect on the notice of decision as far as lighting's concerned? The board have any?
Yeah, I, I would think we could just make it a condition that exterior lighting will conform to, you know, uh, 4.12 of the site plan review regulations.
Does that make sense to everybody? Marc, should you see a problem with that?
Yeah, I, as long, I mean, we don't need to relight the whole site. It just, you know, making sure that there's adequate where the addition goes on, which I don't doubt that they will do, but I think it was important to ask the question and, and see that it's lit properly in the area of the addition.
All right.
So we could just, we can just make it a condition that lighting for the new addition will conform to 4.12 of the site review regulations.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does the board have any other questions before I read the notice of decision?
I, I just want to point out one thing. One of the things to add is, um, because I left this pretty, pretty open. The only other thing would, I would add is that we need to list all the waivers that were granted. I can, I can just do that. You don't have to read them all off, but
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true. Uh, although I did see that on the plans, in anticipation that we would approve them, they had already listed them on the plans.
Yeah. Oh, there aren't, all of them are already on there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you guys, uh, you're lucky, so you're lucky we approved them.
I gave them a hard time about the waivers. I made them rewrite them.
All right, uh, I will read the notice of decision.
But, you know, to our point, shouldn't we list the waivers on, on the approval, though?
Yes, and I will, I will write, insert waivers here.
Not that they would, not that they would do it, but technically that if we don't list them on the condition, on the notice of decision, they could go and just scratch them off the plan.
Dear applicant, this is to inform you
Usually white out, I mentioned Jeff, right?
All right, Ron, you're, you're as old as I am. Come on.
Everybody still uses it.
Did you vote to accept the application as complete, or did I miss that?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did the application, yep.
All right, sorry.
All right, uh, this is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board has conditioned to approve your application reference above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. Uh, add the following plan notes, uh, in, this is where we'll insert those waivers that were granted. Those are already on the plan, but we'll have them in the draft notice of decision. Uh, revise the following plan notes. Lighting, uh, we're, we're going to add the lighting one here. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, what's that lighting there?
Lighting for the new addition, uh, deck area to meet
Show me. Yeah, 4.12 of the, of the site plan review regulations.
Thank you. Any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town. Prior to obtaining board's signature, the applicant should submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3 with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval. This shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during review for the town of Barrington's file. The chairman shall endorse three copies of approved plans, meeting the conditions of approval upon receipt of an executed bond for all improvements. Excluding buildings, the town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11 Excluding buildings, the town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible eleven by seventeen in PDF format with supporting documents with town records. For no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board, so long as it is applied for at least thirty days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least twenty-five percent of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on the site plan. RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. All right. No other questions or comments? A motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve application two twenty-seven dash twenty dash GR dash twenty dash SR.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Ron Allard, uh, James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Number five. Uh, nineteen.
My arena.
Is now exiting.
Nineteen sixty.
Mr. Chairman, so we're an hour and a half in. Does anybody wanna take a, uh, five minute break here?
We will do that. It's eight oh two. We'll be back at eight oh seven. We'll take a quick five minute break. Hey, Marsha, so number five is withdrawn, right? That's the one.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the holy rosary.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I, that was kinda, I was, kind of surprised me.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know if they're just going back to the drawing board or, uh.
I don't know. I was on vacation, so, um, you know, I just caught it basically. I think Barbara sent a.
Did you say it's, did you say it's been withdrawn?
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, a design review.
Well, I got the email a couple days ago.
Yeah.
But I figured they were just starting over with a different design, and that's why they withdrew the current one, but.
They hadn't gotten very far though. I mean, it was really early stages, so, I don't know. I didn't know they, I, I, I offered, you know, if, if there's anything I could do to help, but, um, I, they didn't really, they said, you know, I think they were, for whatever reason, they weren't cheering.
Well, yeah, the plans submitted were pretty rudimentary, but I, I guess I misunderstood. I thought they were postponing the design review. I didn't realize they withdrew it.
The only, uh, that, the only thing, the negative that comes out of it for me is that they cut down that tree for no reason.
Well, I, I don't think it's gonna stay vacant forever over there. They're, I guess it wasn't that healthy though, so.
Well, that's what they all say when they want it to go. Someone else might have designed around.
Beautiful tree.
It was award winning, right, Steve?
Yeah.
You know, that's a location for a town hall I can get behind.
I know, and, you know, I think that's something they could do and put a little, little branch inside the town hall, but, uh. All right.
We are not gonna go, no, we're not going there. No.
I never left there, Jeff.
Not in a public forum, but, uh, all right, um, is, we got everybody back. Andy, Steve, Donna, you back?
I never see Donner. I can, I can see everyone else. I'm just.
All dead.
Dawn is on the phone.
Oh, okay, that would explain it.
Ron, you there? I never. Yeah.
I am here.
We got, all righty, we got number six up, uh, number five, just in case anybody wasn't listening, um, Holy Rosary Credit Unit has, uh, po- uh, requested to, withdraw their design review, and that was in an email received, so we don't have much more information other than that, so, uh, moving on to, uh, reports from other committees and unfinished business. Have anything there?
We just have the, we have two, two private roads.
All right, um.
Yeah, hey, wait a minute. I, I, one other note, you know, uh, about the, going back, the cell tower, you know, what, we talked about the fact that the, the state laws, you know, uh, override whatever, you know, we have to do, and federal law overrides them. But, uh, it, one of the things that didn't get said that I thought of after the discussion was completed was, so, one of the things to consider about not, you know, granting the extension, and even if we went through, back through everything, is that, um, if we, whenever we, uh, deny, in particular, an application, but if we were to deny a waiver, then we have to state the reason why. If we were to use the safety of the technology as justification for granting, uh, a denial, then they could immediately, uh, appeal that to Superior Court, and that, that would be an automatic reversal of the board's decision because, but we have no such, uh, regulation, nor are we even allowed to have such regulations. So, uh, uh, that would be an automatic reversal, which means that not only would have been a pain and costly to the applicant, but then the town's on the hook, cause now we gotta send our lawyer to court to try to defend us in a case that's frankly undefendable.
Right. Yeah, I, I would say, I guess, to me, it's, it's, and I think Steve would say the same thing. It's, it's our, we have a rule for a reason, and if we don't follow it, the rule wouldn't be that it was the technology that scared us off. They didn't meet, we grant one, one year extension, that's it, sorry. Um, and, and, and that's, that's the one I struggle with. What's, what's the legal ramification for not meeting our own rules as opposed to, they don't mean much if we don't, if we waive them? Cause now everybody can say, one year extension doesn't mean anything.
You, you, your folks are making me a little nervous, cause you're really, even though we, you've already voted on this application, I think at another time, if you had a general conversation, not about a specific application, it would be more appropriate. I think discussing a, a application after you've actually voted on it in the same meeting is, is not really appropriate.
Yeah, I guess, I would say we're not talking about the application. We're talking about waiving our rules and the, the legal ramification of waiving our own rules. But, uh, we'll move on and talk about it another time. Um, so, uh, building permit at forty-five, Long Shore Drive, Robert and Tamara Semenu. Any questions? The Barrington Planning Board.
Well, actually, this isn't really a question, but, you know, we have had discussions about the requirement in the site review regulations that requires a fifteen foot culvert. And in fact, the road agent, Mark Moreau, has come back and said, hey, in some cases, you, you know, a twelve inch culvert is just fine. And, uh, because trying to bury it in the driveway, given the cut of the shoulders, uh, eighteen inch is too big. It just so happens while doing research, uh, for this case and another one, that, uh, I was re- refreshed my memory in reading the, uh, regulations. And, uh, the site review regulations say that if you, uh, that the minimum size, uh, used in a, uh, in a drainage system, he uses those words, drainage system, in the site review regulations is fifteen inches. However, if you go back to the subdivision regulations, where it talks about culverts, which is in, what we have in this case, it says all culverts shall be at least twelve inches in diameter and then specifies what material. So I'm thinking back about some of the discussions we've had recently. I think one of them was like, uh, Stone House, in which we were discussing the fifteen inch requirement, and when in reality, the subdivision regulations, which actually contain the, the, the road regulations that are referred to by the subdivision, uh, the, uh, site review plan, uh, regulations, that says twelve inches. So I think there may be some cases where we, uh, may not have had to waive the fifteen inches, because if we've gone back to the subdivision regulations, it says culverts only have to be twelve. So I just wanted to note that.
All right. Remember that next time we talk and we can, uh, yeah, it comes up and we can, we can clarify. Um, so what are we looking at? Looks like, uh, am I correctly just putting a, a, a manufactured home on a Simmons lab?
Yeah, if there isn't, um, the memo one, this is rather long. I hope everyone took a look at it, cause Mark, um, the road agent did, did, um, take the time to write up, um, quite a few comments.
I see that.
I incorporated those into the memo.
Yeah, hey, Marsha, I'll just note in the last paragraph, the first sentence, it says the road in front of the property, I think that's in front.
Thank you, I'll fix that.
I didn't know what a front was, but I know what a front is. Do you know if Mark, uh, specified the fifteen inch because he thought that's what the regulations say, or he really thought it was needed to be fifteen inches?
I, like, I mean, the town does prefer fifteen inch anyway, so if he called it out as fifteen inch, then he believes that's what was needed.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
If you went out and looked at this one, you would see that there's quite a, um, elevation in the road before you get there, so if on a rainy day, there would be quite a bit of water going down through there in that area.
Yeah, looking at his description, that, that does seem to be quite a hilly area, and there's quite a bit of water could flow down through there.
I was gonna make the exact comment John did, that, uh, there's, there's some pretty good drainage ditches up through that road, and with the hill there, it, uh, moves a fair amount of water.
Yeah, they're gonna have a tough time getting the, the manufactured home over that hill rise. I don't, bottoming out wise, but.
Oh, drive out there now. They already got the driveway cut in, so it's almost flat.
Oh, really?
You're gonna use a skyhook to bring it in, Jamie.
Works for me. All right, anybody else have any comments before we make a motion to send this memo to the select board?
So to make this, sorry, just to, so, so the road agent is saying, uh, what is the road agent saying is needed? Uh, cutting, cutting to improve sightlines? Uh, should that be specific? About how far to, to see how far, do you know what I mean? Uh, just, it's fairly general.
He actually went over it with the homeowner out there, and they've been out there with, um, logging equipment, and that's the reason why I know about that driveway thing going in. They cut all the trees on that whole corner going up around on that property, so you can see, coming down the hill, you can see all the way out to Second Crown Point now.
And the, uh, the homeowner is going to, uh, repatch the, it says, the road in front of the property is old pavement, in poor condition, and the edges will likely be destroyed during construction. And should be patched. Do we need to specify what that means and how, what they have to do exactly to make this okay?
To me, it's clear if you understand road bingo. I'm not sure what you mean by being more specific.
What is?
This is a recommendation to the, to the board of selectmen too, so hopefully they'll take a look at it when they, when they take their actual, the actual vote on the improvement. Our president too.
Andy, as the ex officio, will pass along those concerns, right?
Yeah, I can pass that on.
Cool.
All right. We have a motion to send this memo to. We have a motion to send this memo to the Board of Selectmen.
I make a motion to send the corrected memo on map 111 lot 3 building permit to the select board.
Second. Motion by Jeff Brand, I believe that was second by Andy Knapp.
Yep.
Uh, Ron, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jensen, aye. Memo is sent. Next, we have a building permit for 389 McDaniel, McDaniel Shore Drive. Dan and Nancy Bergeron.
In this particular case, the road was in excellent condition for a private road. And the only thing that Mark recommended, if there was some kind of, of damage to the road, that it be graded. Really good shape.
Well, I remember McDaniel Shore Drive from other applications. It's, it's better than a lot of them, but it is narrower than it's supposed to be in some places, and sightlines aren't perfect for sure.
Correct. Alright, I don't have a letter attached to mine, but the typical letter, motion for the typical letter to be sent to the select board.
I have a letter, Jamie, if you want me to read it.
Sure.
Uh, the Barrington Planning Board at the September 1st, 2020 meeting, expressed without objection to send a letter to the select board that they saw no conflict with the regulations in issuing a building permit for map 125 lot 5 located at 389 McDaniel Shore Drive. The board recommends the road be recreated if disturbed as recommended.
I will make a motion to send that letter to the select board.
Second.
Uh, motion by James Jensen, second by Ron Allard, James Jensen, aye, Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Memo is sent.
Just a quick comment to, I'd like Andy to hear.
Oh, yes.
So this is, this is an expansion of livable area, which is an intensification of residential use in a questionably accessible location.
Thanks.
Noted.
Do we have, oh, minutes. Don't want to forget the minutes, where did I put them, there they are. Alright, minutes from August 18th. Questions, correct, I'm sorry.
I do have a couple of clarifications on the minutes, only for the notice of decision portion for line revision. I just wanted to make sure there's some extra stuff in there and the stuff that had to be taken out kind of thing. It was very confusing because there was a lot included in the draft. I just want to make sure that it was, it's concise with what the board voted. So under number two, on the draft notice of decision portion, at the time, the, the clearest way is we had A B out of C. And if C would be under the waivers that were granted, put 5.3.1 per ins 9.
So that would be a C, we're out of there.
So this, this is on the application for.
It was the lot line revision for up on, oh, Pont Hill.
Okay.
Yep.
It, yeah, because I just wanted, because it was a waiver that was granted, it should be granted listed under the waivers. Um, let's see, then. Let's see, we did have on three, any disturbance or modification on lot 11, other than permitted under 9.4 would require wetlands still in aviation as of August 10th, 2020. And then put zoning, one minute, we have to add in there the zoning ordinance as of October 18th, 2020 would apply. We were missing zoning ordinance.
That's on number three?
Yeah, zoning ordinance as of.
Is that what the actual notice of decision says?
I'm, I'm fixing it for what was read into the record.
Okay.
I remember Andy in particular, one that was pointed out, we wanted the August, the current zoning ordinance, so we put as of August 18th.
Per zone, so it should say, after survey, it should say, per zoning regulations as of August 18th, 2020 would apply? Does that sound right?
Okay, so section 9.4 would require wetlands delineation, zoning ordinance as of August 18th, 2020 would apply.
That's, that's great to me.
Okay, and then, then completely cross out what was number four.
Yep.
Okay. Could be that now move 5.3.9 up to number two. And I'm not sure, and 5.3.1 parentheses 5 was already listed.
Yes, as a waiver.
Yeah, as a waiver. And that's all, I just wanted to make sure there was.
Alright, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended by the town planner.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, James Jensen, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Diamond.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Knapp.
Aye.
Allard.
Allard, aye.
Minutes for August 18th are approved as amended. Uh, do we have anything else? Is there any master plan talk or anything?
Conversation.
Go ahead.
The conversation about going, whether you folks want to go out to get prices for having a different engineer of record, or how you wanted to handle that.
So for, for any of the board members that are not up to date, there was an email sent out to myself, John, and Marcia in regards to the engineer contracted by the town. The select board is not happy with DuBois and King, so they are looking to hire someone differently. We are not obligated to go with who they choose. We can do a combination, stick with DuBois and King, go with someone totally different. So presenting to the boards, and I'd like Andy's input as well, you know, from the select board's standpoint, and certainly John and Marcia, because they deal with them the most, you know, what we think we should do as far as engineers go.
I'd like to say something, having participated in the last round when DuBois and King was selected, in that there was a lot of back and forth. It is the select board's job to select the engineering firm. And the board, and the committee that was working on this, that included me, and I think Marcia, you were part of that, was, we made a recommendation. We, we actually went and we did, we met with the different engineering firms, they gave us a pitch. We, we rated them, and we gave the select board our top three choices for them to make a decision, which they then kicked back to us and said that we ought to make a decision. And we said, no, that's the select board's job. So I, I just, for the ex officio member, remember whose job it is to actually make the decision.
Jeff, do you, uh?
Oh, sorry. The planning board can choose their own separate.
Right, we, we had decided not to do that, so therefore.
At that time.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff, do you remember who the top recommendation was? Was it DuBois and King? I, I'm not.
Uh, I'm not sure, I could probably look it up. I, I might have some notes from back then, I don't, I don't know.
And, yeah, Marcia, do you remember by any chance who you guys were leaning towards?
I believe they were at the time. I believe they were at the time. And there were like two or three that were up there. Do you remember, John? I think there were two or three that were.
Yeah, I, I think where we're at now is, if you have the selectmen put the RFQ out about looking to hire another one, you can see who is interested, you can see what their qualifications are. And Jeff has made a couple of comments in this past year, I've been here, where he would like the review to be more about engineered design and not about our regulations, because he felt the planning board looked at the regulations. So I think if they did it as a committee, and Jeff wanted to be on it again, you could look at some of the stuff that you would like an engineer to do, to see which engineering firm might best meet the requirements of what you believe the planning board's looking for.
Uh, Andy, is that the intention of the select board to put together a group to look at those?
Yes, so essentially what came out of it is, at the last select board meeting, we're going over some roads that have been constructed, as well as looking at some roads in town that are going to potentially need some work. Everything from Young Road and the bridge and the Causeway and Province Road with the potential injection of stone. And a, a lot of what has come out of just conversation is, we're getting these massively high quotes to come in and do stuff, or to rectify them, and yet we're seeing other towns that are doing projects for a fraction of the cost of what Barrington's getting quoted to, to complete them.
And the reason for that related to DuBois and King is what, Andy?
DuBois and King is the town, is the engineer of record for the town, so we're relying on them to put together the proposal. Then gets sent out and ends up kind of shoot from, and, and this is my take on it, shoehorning us into very few diversified options.
You know, to that end, Andy, I mean, I think it's always good to have two, you know, an option. I, I think two firms would make sense for the planning board. If one gets busy or is not delivering a good product, move the other one. That gets their attention. When you're kind of tied into one, they hold you hostage and you, you know, you're pretty much stuck with them, and you don't get the, to me, you don't get the same service.
That is an option the planning board could look at.
Yep. Yeah, one of the problems with that, though, is when you start splitting things up, is that when we were going through evaluations, an engineering firm having some history with the town that knows what our regulations are, because every town's regulations are a little bit different. They all started state law, but they're not all the same. And so somebody who knows the players, who knows our regulations, that is helpful.
Yeah, but if we had two, they could, you know, it's not, it's not beyond two firms following the regulations.
Right.
And if you have one firm, if you have one firm at the engineer, who's normally gives you, leaves a firm, it's still the same problem.
And, you know, I think it limited to, to two. I know in talking to Connor, Connor would prefer to see, see one. You know, the only other thing is, I know there are some, you know, like the town now and, and uses some for like dams and bridges and some for other things. So, Andy?
Oh, yep. Barbara?
Yeah, I have the finalist from 2016. I also have them from 2015. Of the ones they turned in.
Yes, we can, we can. Everyone? With a finalist for 2016.
Tied in bond, Underwood, DuBois and King. DuBois and King, Underwood, and I guess that, that's it.
That would be the top three. So I guess. The select board's gonna form a committee to look at options, Andy?
I'll talk with the board at the next meeting.
My suggestion would be, be we have, if there's anyone that would volunteer to be part of, part of that committee, planning board members, so.
I can say, probably inappropriately, I had a lot of experience on Underwood Engineering, was never a good experience.
I agree.
Good to know. Yeah, I, I mean, it, it does seem like options are limited, so I'll be interested to see what the select board comes out with. And I guess, unsure on our, they're gonna put out the RFQ, correct? And then we'll see who's interested and then decide.
So you want to be part of the process then? Someone from the planning board will be part of the process? So that you can pick.
I would, I would strongly advise that.
Thank you, that's what I'm trying.
Yes, I, I definitely think someone from the planning board should be involved in that process. Because that, that, that firm is going to be working for us as much as it is the select board.
Right, and you could have different ones too. That's, that's the point I tried to make. You guys can pick a different one than they do.
Well, and, and that was one of the considerations when we were going through it the last time is, because you ended up, we, we dropped a couple off the list, or they, they, because they were specific, like they were really good road engineers, but they had very little experience doing anything else. And so that didn't re, really meet the, the needs of the planning board. It was okay for the, you know, for the highway department, but not for us.
Well, if we're opening more than one firm too, we could have different firms of different areas of expertise.
That's true, that's true. But the select board, I would say, as they set this up, they gotta be on board with that. I understand Connor's feelings, I can understand why, actually, you know, from my previous management experience, but that, that may not be the best thing for us.
Stressing, well, I think more towards the select board, and he does like that idea, but that he's not discouraging you from picking your own versus the select board picking one. So I just wanted to make that clear.
It's not entirely clear to me, I've heard some things that elucidate the issue somewhat, but it's not entirely clear to me what the grievance is around DuBois and King, and I wonder if there's a way of, of working out an adjustment with them of some kind to make them a more suitable candidate.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you what my problem with them is, Steve. Every time they do a review, they say, does meet regulations? Take the next step and tell us, but it's okay, or it's not okay, and here's why. They never do that.
Has that been communicated back to them?
You know, I, I, I don't know why that would have to be communicated to them. That's your job as an engineer.
The selectman's issue is more from an engineering point of view, more than a regulatory point of view. There's a, there's, there's two different things going on here, that's way beyond planning board.
Well, it sounds like there's also a cost issue that the select board has, but to Steve's point, you know, I think we have tried to signal recently what we want from DuBois and King, but we could probably do better at that. And I guess the same question goes to the ex officio member is, so has the select board communicated to DuBois and King that they feel that the, the estimates that they're getting, that their costs are higher than what the select board is desires?
Yes, this was communicated three years ago when we originally went back.
And they're always over. I always have to collect more money from applicants.
Yeah.
You know, that's really unfortunate, two firms. The best way to get.
They've had applicants, yeah. I've actually had applicants ask me, how come it costs them more to get the review than it cost them for their design?
Uh, so do we need to nominate someone at this point? Are we going to hear from the select board when they form that committee? And Andy will convey that we want to put someone on there?
I will convey that at the next meeting. Did, we want to have someone from the planning board on there and start pushing, getting, getting that moving forward?
Yeah, I think we ought to wait till the select board acts, and then when they say, yes, we're ready to act, then. Yeah, I think we ought to wait till the select board acts and then when they say, yes, we're ready to act, then we put somebody on the committee.
Personally, I nominate Jeff, if you don't mind, since you have some continuity on this issue.
I'd be willing to consider doing it again. I do, I do have experience. I might be able to dig out some of my old notes.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Makes sense to me. And if there's anybody else that wants in on it, then we can discuss whether there's room for another person, but. So that, that's what we'll do. We'll wait to see the, the select board's next move and that they know we want to add a member. Anything else?
The only other thing is I know that they, and I think I said this the last meeting, SRPC does have a revised copy of the master plan. So we'll try and fit that in as soon as possible, I guess, to our schedule.
Are we doing a second meeting in September?
It's up to you folks.
It's September 15th. Right now you have minutes.
And your faces if there are going to be any, that's it.
Uh, board's thoughts on that?
Like you need to ask?
Yeah.
Well, do you want to try to get Stratford Regional for that meeting? I guess is what the question is.
Good question.
Oh, Jeff, you're muted.
Uh, I'd point out, we, we did hold meetings this summer because of the workload and so we didn't take our normal break. So maybe we want to consider not having the next meeting.
All right. Do you think we can get Stratford Regional for October 6th? Well, that would probably be, we'd probably have a load on the 6th if we skip the 15th, right? So we'd want to put them, could we put them on the 20th or is that putting it too far out, Marcia? Do we want to get to it sooner?
Oh, put it in the second meeting in October?
Correct.
I mean, I think that'll give them time to find somebody if we let them know right away to make sure we have someone available and they're prepared.
Let's do that then. Let's, let's skip the meeting on the 15th. We'll plan for October 6th, our next meeting.
Do you want us to also schedule a, have Barbara, we worked, schedule an actual public hearing? Because by then you'll be able to have the draft and everything.
Yeah, we can probably do that. If we can get the draft, you know, quickly. And then if we have any additional comments, feed them back. We could get ready for that and still hit the notice date.
Okay.
And there's not, there's not usually a ton of opposition to these, you know.
Not to a master plan.
Right. So I think that works. We'll do the 20th and do a public notice up to the 20th and do the public hearing.
Well, it's too bad that Donna's already sent me an invitation to the meeting on the 15th, so she'll have to.
She'll have to reset it. Uh, all right. I have motion to adjourn until October 6th.
Make a motion to adjourn till October 6th.
I second.
One minute, October 6th. Oh, yeah, October 6th. Okay.
October 6th. All, uh, we'll do a roll call. Ron Allard.
I'm going to say nay just to throw you guys off.
Uh, Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Diamond.
Aye.
James Jensen, aye. Ron, you, you lose out. All right. See you October 6th.
I'm devastated.
Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Yeah, take care.
Night, everyone.
Donna Masucci.
Is now exiting.